Okay, right this up there. Chris wanted to have to know with this spreadsheet he had to come on and see. But we can use the hard copies.
Okay. Sterling, would you like water? Okay, I'm gonna get it forward then. That's right, I don't need to run back upstairs immediately. Be here, be here, off.
Does it work?
Hello, everyone.
Almost.
I know. Like up.
It is nice that all our watches are synchronized. In the movies, they used to have to do it before they went on a mission.
I'm sorry, really quickly, I don't know your name.
I'm Amy Shepherd.
Okay, thank you. Well, hello, everyone. Right on time.
Even in airplane mode, I don't know what else to do. Nope, it was not important.
Christian, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Shepherd for a minute for planning.
Mayor Vice Mayor. Um, I wanted to take this opportunity to let you know of a couple of projects that are happening. These are often items you're not gonna see coming before City Council because they don't require approval, but to make sure you have an awareness of what is happening in the community. So we have a couple of interesting items from last week's TRC agenda. We have the 1300 Campbell Avenue Apartments. Site plans submitted for the redevelopment of an existing building for 120 apartments and new parking areas. This is at the site of the old Barker Jennings Building. It is located in a state national historic district, and the developer has indicated that they intend to use historic tax credits for the development. We also have Delta Star. A site plan was submitted for two new parking areas to facilitate the expansion. That was announced last month, and it will be followed up by more substantial plans. And then next week's TRC agenda, we have River Ridge Mall West End Park, which is the area of the mall that you see they often have the ice skating in during the winter time. A site plan has been submitted for the construction of three new buildings, a stage, and a synthetic turf area. And then also for Framatome as part of their expansion, a site plan has been submitted for a 10,500 square foot training facility.
Yeah, go ahead.
If we wanted to see these site plans, how hard would that be to actually visual, I'm a visual guy?
Okay, we can provide that for you.
I would love to see what the plans are. Thank you.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, I will say too, um, they're actually available for the public to see. You can just look up the address on our GIS systems, and the site plans and everything are available there, so.
Well, let me save you some trouble. I navigate the GIS phone, and I didn't realize it was that up to date. Awesome.
That's great. Dr. Bobby.
As far as the Barker Jennings property, do they have a timeline? They've broken it for some while, because we did a tour of their original when they first started, probably before COVID, I guess, but I said, I haven't heard anything about it anymore.
I am not sure about the timeline of this plan. I do know it was, was rezoned in 2021 to allow for apartments from B5 to B4, and the property was sold to a new developer. And so that the apartments are still in the works for that.
Okay, so the gentleman, the people from Richmond, I guess, not, they've sold that property?
They have sold the property.
Oh, okay, you know who's, well, that's okay, that's all right.
I'm not sure who that is, but I can find that out for you.
Wow, interesting, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Thank you, really appreciate it, very excited about the growth, lots of fun things. Awesome, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to, oh, you nodded here.
Yeah, I did, I did. Ms. Shepherd is also, as the Deputy Director for Community Development, she is going to be doing our Property Toolkit as well.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, I'm looking at our Property Toolkit to give you some updates of the toolkit. And the idea behind the Property Toolkit is really using co-compliance efforts in the Property Toolkit to address our blightedness issues. The program benefits, of course, we're looking at removal of blighted conditions, neighborhood beautification, increasing property values, and also providing housing opportunities. And numbers and figures by neighborhoods, as you can see from our derelict program and demolition, their focus really is in the areas of Diamond Hill, College Hill, and White Rock. I wanted to take the opportunity just to kind of give you some examples with our derelict program as part of this Property Toolkit, and what it provides for in the community. And as you can see here at 2005 Park Avenue, 2023, what the assessment value is. Then once the rehabilitation has been done, what the current assessment value is. And this property was literally finished maybe a month ago. And it went from a hoarding situation where there were actually squatters living in the home, and then became part of our derelict program, and it sold in December for 315,000. We have 2611 Dudley Street. Again, you can see initial assessment value, what it looks like after rehabilitation. This was a property that had been condemned for at least a decade, and the owner was considering, considering actually demolishing the building because the property was in such bad shape. But once it became part of the derelict program, work being done on it, and in April it sold for 255,000.
Question on that last one.
Go ahead.
What was wrong with it that they were considering condemning it?
I think it was a multitude of things. I quickly looked at it, but like with foundation, water damage, windows, rot and deterioration, just all of the things that needed to be done and such disrepair that they were really considering demo it.
And it did sell?
It did sell.
How much was the sale price?
255,000.
From value of 100, oh, 255, from the 204 assessment of 211, that's, that's amazing.
Went from 13,000 to over 200,000.
255 value, and that's the actual value, because somebody paid that much.
Yes, someone actually paid that much.
And they'll be paying property taxes on that much.
Yes. Then we have 2110 Filbert Street. Again, you can see from initial assessments to once work was done. This was actually one of the first properties within our derelict program that sold and was renovated. And this property itself had also been condemned for 10 years. 1640 Blackburn is another example. This had been another property condemned for at least a decade, and recently sold in December for 147,000. 1101 Ashbourne, this is actually in Peaks View at the end of the cul-de-sac. This property had been condemned for 20 years and had been rehabilitated. And I believe the owner is currently living in this home. 1911 Bransford Street is another example. This derelict program actually enticed this owner to sell it to someone else to get it in the hands of someone who could actually do some work on it and revive the property. This property came to us because initially people were living in it. We received complaints about the living conditions, and it was condemned. This property is almost complete with its renovations. 2501 Lorraine Street is still a work in process, progress. There's one person who is working on this property, comes in on weekends to work on the property, and they're definitely making progress. 1307 Taylor, a duplex, they are close to finishing, and this was another property that had been condemned for at least 10 years. 301 Chambersville. This again is a solo person, the owner is working on it. They did, they did not sell the property, and this program actually enticed them to start working on the property. It's about 75% complete. 1522 Buchanan, same owner for many years. And what they are currently doing are the, the work that does not require a permit, so a lot of the cosmetic things that need to be done to this home. And you'll see here, here are other lists of properties that we're currently looking at and keeping an eye on that are coming kind of down the pipe for us to look at for our derelict program. And this is our program figures, looking at the entire Property Toolkit. You can see the city-funded demo, as we look at quarterly from January of '24 to April of 2025, within a year and a half. Our city-funded demo, we just completed two, 1106 and 808 Florida. Florida thankfully with additional funding that was provided by council for the programs. We currently have two in progress, which is 900 Florida and 2021 Campbell, and one that is currently in a hold pattern because it has changed owners. You also can see from the final numbers with their derelict program, we have added 19 properties into our derelict program within the month of April to give us a total of 71 programs currently, properties currently in our derelict program. And that is all that I have for you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions.
Please.
I don't know if anyone else has questions they'd like to direct first.
You first, I'll go after you.
Thank you, so, and I've, I've corresponded with Mr. White about this a little bit because I have a lot of interest in this program and how it operates. But when you refer specifically to the derelict program, is that what's coming out of the derelict building ordinance in 2022?
Yes.
So that's specifically tied to that ordinance and how it operates with the fees in order to entice or incentivize the shift? Okay, and then the, the other question I'd have with that is just when it comes to partnering with private nonprofits and developers, I know there's a list as far as outreach. Is there any opportunity for, let's say, like, a dashboard as some of these homes come into the program so that? I, I've been meeting with different developers who are interested in fill-out properties and opportunities, especially when it comes to affordable housing opportunity with that. And so just being able to have that accessibility publicly, I think, may capitalize on the city's effort in the private sector. So I'm just curious what we could explore as far as a dashboard or accessibility in order to have that information really readily available.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have something? Okay, I agree, the dashboards are really wonderful. It's visual, again, I'm a visual person, so I like to see how it's going. This one particularly interests me, this whole program. You see some very visual examples of, of value being added to our city and, and tax revenue being brought in that has never been there before, so that's, that's great. I didn't see a whole lot of the homes that were, maybe, maybe it was a before and after, but it looked like the same house being rehabilitated in most of these. These were not cases where someone had actually demolished it and rebuilt.
No, these were not demolished, no.
Is there a reason why the presentation only includes refurb, not recreate?
The derelict program is just one piece of the larger Property Toolkit because the goal overall is rehabilitation. If we can get home, over destruction, because that's a whole nother process and requires a lot of other things to it. So if we can get homes into the hands of owners who want to actually, you know, revitalize these homes and, and turn them into something, that's, that's the goal.
Sure. Okay, that's, that's my question.
Yes, thank you for the information, I really appreciate it. You know, programs like this are so important because it's such a challenge of black property in our neighborhood, especially if you live in 301, so it's such a, it's good to have the asset on toolkit so we can continue to refurbish our neighborhoods. Only one challenge, one thought I have is just that I was looking for other financial resource to do that, because just for a normal person, it's just so costly. I see a lot of developers are doing this flipping a property and things of that nature, and it just takes some, a lot of income to, capital to revitalize these properties. I'm always looking for programs that can assist with that. So if I just keep you on radar, I was in Richmond on Saturday and walking past a, a property, and it was from a, a bank, and it says this property is eligible for something, funding for something for rehab or whatever. So I'm always, and I meant to take a picture of it, I didn't. I'm always looking for ideas or other resources that are out there. And they've talked about the, what's the other program called? The, the, you know.
The Dollar Home Program?
Well, that, but also something about the, the fund rebuilding, the fund.
Oh, okay.
I can't think of the.
Housing Trust.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I'm always looking for information like the Housing Trust Program and things of that nature. Just always looking for just more resources. Because like, like one lady that had, had her property value increased, I think it was, it was just, it, it really jumped, and they did go by and reassess her property. But I think it was because of a lot of construction in the area, where a lot of properties had increased in value. I guess because some developers came in and revitalized some of the property. So I guess it just bring the whole value up. But for a person who's just still in the home and they didn't do any renovations, it kind of skewed her, her value. So they did do a reassessment, and it took a lot off of that. So I'm appreciative to the staff for doing that. But again, just always looking for resource for people who want to stay in the homes or people who might own a home but just can't afford to do, those renovations are expensive. So this other program that are out here for normal, for normal people to do it, yes. Thank you.
Just if I may follow up on that, because we always like to say these things out loud, especially on camera. And one of our hallmark programs right now is, of course, the real estate rehab program that allows folks to freeze that assessment value when they are doing these renovations. So through our city assessor's office, that's, that's a, that's a great tool for anyone who wants to keep the home or for someone who's putting it in the hands of a builder to ultimately transfer, so.
Yes, sir, thank you for reminding me briefly of that.
I have a feedback question on a couple of these. So, and thank you so much, this is very helpful. So this was all falling or connected into the derelict building ordinance. What are some of the other branches or arms of the Property Toolkit? Because there's the rental inspection program, I don't know if it's kind of a cousin. So like, what are the different branches of specifically the Property Toolkit?
Okay, so rental inspections is not necessarily part of the rent, of the Property Toolkit. But of course, it all goes hand in hand when you're dealing with housing or any of these things. Derelict is a part of it, but then we also have the vacant program that people register their homes. So all of these can kind of piggyback and, and lead along to each other. But then we also have our demolition funds as well. Should a property get into a point where property owner can't do anything with it or such disrepair that it cannot be rehabbed? So all of these together kind of culminate and make up what the Property Toolkit is.
Thank you, and especially when it comes to demolition and some of that. I, I met with a number of community leaders the other day, and one of the concerns that came up was the inability, well, that a number of homeowners don't have wills. And so then you'll have 17-plus legitimate heirs to the property.
Yes.
And then it falls into disrepair. And so is there a resource, whether with a local nonprofit or the city, where there can be a partnership that can help provide wills for some of these individuals in advance?
Okay.
That would really, it, it would undercut future costs, it would provide a great service. So I don't know what there's available, especially on the nonprofit side, to be able to, to assist in that regard, to have clarity of ownership.
Sure.
If I may, I will say that the vision for the Property Toolkit, of course, it's a stepped program, and as you mentioned, it really started with this, with these co-compliance programs and the derelict program that Ms. Shepherd mentioned in 2022. The funding that we've talked about envisions enabling resources through nonprofits, a housing trust, and being able to do little things to remove barriers, whether that's infrastructure, whether that's addressing properties that just have multiple heirs that sometimes the family doesn't even realize are they are. And I don't want to call them minor barriers because they're actually major barriers when you're looking to redevelop something, but at a relatively minor cost.
And right away, it becomes such an obstacle.
Yes, ma'am, so that is the long-term goal of our Property Toolkit. So when we talk about all, how all the facets come together, that's, that's the ultimate goal. Certainly demolition is a piece in preparation of that property, but the incentives on that backend are the, are the things that ultimately goes there.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on to our next agenda item? Awesome, then let's head on to transportation. Thank you so much. Really great meeting you.
Thank you.
Mr. Newland?
All right. I believe council asked for an explanation of various methods of funding through state and federal processes.
Yes, please.
So, the main two obviously are federal, and under federal, we have a smart scale program, which is a two-year application cycle. It's 100% federal funds, no city funds involved with it. It's very highly competitive across the state, and it's mainly used for larger projects. They score, they tweak the scoring every year, and it scored on, the projects are scored on safety, congestion, and any environmental impacts that the project might have. Also included under this is a district grant portion, and that competition is just within the district. Most of air that we have gotten funding from is within the district grant program. Then another federal program is the Transportation Alternatives Program, they call it TAP. It's also on two-year application. also on two-year application cycle, it's eighty percent federal and twenty percent local, I'm going to say usually, they, eighty percent is always federal, the twenty percent sometimes is, sometimes a state contributes to it, so. That project is used for mainly for sidewalks, bike lanes, the Rails to Trails Program, and that type of non-road transportation. Previously, it's been capped to a million dollars per locality, and they are trying to get that up a little bit more, million and a half, I believe is where it is this year. Next is Safe Routes to School, is also a subset of the TAP program, federal funded, that's a yearly application cycle, it is one hundred percent federal funds, and it's for bicycle and sidewalk improvements near schools. Then there's the Highway Safety Improvement Fund. It's a yearly application as well, it's eighty percent federal, usually twenty percent local. They've changed it, they used to be for bike and pedestrian improvements, they've changed it now to systemic improvements, which would be rumble strips along a curve, putting up reflective backplates on signals, things like that, that's more of a system-wide approach for safety. It'd also be used for road diets, but.
What is a road diet?
Road diet, yes, when you take a larger four-lane road, make it two travel lanes instead of four, a center turn lane and bike lanes.
Have you ever heard that term?
Then after federal, we get into the state funding. The main one that is used, and has been used for quite some time, is the revenue sharing. It's a two-year application cycle, and as it says, revenue sharing, it's fifty percent state and fifty percent local. It's competitive on throughout the state, statewide process, the eligibility requirements are broad, but they also have a priority funding system to it, and existing revenue sharing projects get first priority, new revenue sharing gets second priority, you can use it for maintenance items, that's a third priority. You really rarely ever get to maintenance items where it's able to fund maintenance items, they, they run out of money before they get there, it's a, it's used by many localities. Lynchburg has, has been very successful with the revenue sharing projects over the years, and I'll get to some of those projects as we get a little bit further down. Then there's a state of good repair, and it's got two sides to it, one is pavements, which I'll talk about first, and others bridges, it's a yearly application cycle, it's a hundred percent state funds now, they're talking about using federal funds on it, it's used for pavements on the primary roads throughout the city, not on the local roads, can't be used on those, and they use it on a rating system, so the state, every year, or, they do it every year, and they do a quarter of the state at a time, so every four years, they will ride the streets with a machine that basically takes pictures, feels ride quality, picks up how many cracks in the road, and they come up with a, a rating on it, and that's what's used to, for state of good repair on their ratings. Also, that helps if it gives you a higher rating is the volume of traffic and if it's on the national highway system, so those, those are two other points that go along with the condition of the roadway. The next is the good repair, state of good repair for the bridges, same thing, it's a yearly, yearly application cycle, it's a hundred percent state funds, and currently, they're trying to get it to federal funding, it's highly competitive as well, and it's across the state for all the bridges, and it has been in the past only for bridges that are rated poor, this year, they're adding a fair rating, if the bridge is rated fair, it will be eligible. And it, this program, you can only use it to repair the bridge, you can't add features to it, you can't make it wider, can't make it longer, can't add sidewalks, only thing you can do is repair the existing bridge as is. Then there, for other state funding, there are access programs, this is new roads to access undeveloped land, it's used for industrial parks, recreational parks and rec parks, and for airports, and that application process is a rolling application through the state, and if they have funds and it meets their criteria, then they will give you funds for it. So I said, the city has been very successful, so since two thousand and seven, these are some of the funds that we have received, on the urban side, which is what they, before they had state of good repair and smart scale, they were, it was urban funds that was given to the localities to be able to improve their roadways and to do projects, about total of eighty-four and a half million since two thousand and seven there, smart scale in the city, we're up to about a hundred and twenty-three million, the TAP, about two and a half million, Safe Routes to School, about a half a million, and the Highway Safety Improvement, almost nine million in funds that the city has received, well, with, with the city funding have received for projects. And I said, revenue sharing, we have been, like I said, we have been very successful in that, sixty-three point nine million state and local for a whole, total of a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. State of Good Repair on the pavement, about three and a half million, state of good repair for the bridge, almost seventeen million dollars, and access programs, we really hadn't used it much, but there's currently a application in that is going to be voted on here in a couple of weeks at the C T B for industrial access out at the Lynchpin Industrial Park, to get to one of the sites that economic development is working on. And then studies, with about a hundred thousand dollars in studies that the state does, they, they'll do a study, and then we can use those studies to apply for smart scale or revenue sharing projects. Some of the upcoming projects that we have both federal and state funding on, there's the Nationwide Drive Sidewalk, which was a highway safety improvement before they changed it to the systemic, it's getting under construction this week, there's Old Forest Road, which is pedestrian improvements from King's Drive to the Railroad Bridge, that's also highway safety improvement, there's a couple of revenue sharing that are underway, Link Road at Boon's Borough is a traffic signal, that we plan to have a citizens' information meeting on May twenty-ninth, y'all, that'll probably come out if you haven't seen it yet, that information about the meeting, and there's Ward's Ferry Road, which is a turn lane at Atlanta, then smart scale, the CBCC Roundabout, and the Canlers Mountain Interchange, both of those are smart scale funded. The five oh one two twenty-one improvement has multiple fundings on it, smart scale plus revenue sharing. There's Mill Race Drive, which is the industrial park, there's two phases to that, that is transportation alternatives, that sidewalk on both sides of the roadway out there for the industrial park, Florida Avenue, we've had conversations with that, Mayor Taylor and Councilman Wilder before, that is sidewalks along Florida Avenue up from, oh, from basically James Crossing down to the Detention Center. Then there's Bedford Avenue Bridge, which is a state of good repair project that we're trying to get underway, it's about a twenty-four million dollar project, and Hansmill Road Bridge is a revenue sharing project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Are these projects available on G I S too, to see something visually?
The plans are on G I S.
Plans, I don't think are, they're on the, the Capitol, the C I P dashboard.
C I P dashboard?
I believe so, yes.
Does that show, like, visual, the artist rendering of the final products, that kind of thing?
I don't, I think there's just a snippet.
Do not think so, yeah.
There was just a snippet about the project, I don't think there's plans attached.
So if you had a new guy who was relatively new to this whole thing and wanted to kind of catch up, what would you recommend?
Like, you have some, that you have some in the budget book, right? They still announce the budget book, because some reason.
Yeah, so, so the, the highway plans.
That's good, thank you, I'll look at that.
The highway plans are quite large, I mean, we're talking two hundred, three hundred pages on some of these.
I'm sure, I'm kind of looking at the fifty thousand foot view.
So.
Google Earth view of it.
Right, so, right, so, yeah, there's probably information, but I don't think it's out, in other words, when we apply for these on, on applications, we have to have a sketch, so there is a sketch probably at that stage, which would be early, maybe not exactly what's happening, because it may have gotten tweaked from the, from the sketch, yes, but.
I could get some kind of Reader's Digest, just to get me up to speed, that would be really appreciated, and I'm sure some other people might appreciate that as well. One other question, I'm on the Central Virginia Planning District Commission, and I've attended the first meeting digitally online, plan on trying to attend other events, seems like a lot of smart scale stuff coming through there, do you attend these? Does anybody else go to those?
So the, the M P O, which is a Metropolitan Planning Organization, I believe Greg is on that one.
Okay.
And then there is a Technical Transportation Committee, which is a subgroup of that, that really gets down into the weeds with the projects, and, yeah, my transportation engineer, Ryan Roberts, he goes to that, sometimes I'll go to that, but I believe, and then plan, they already left, Rachel Fresh Eisen goes to it as well as a city planner.
Obviously, I want to figure out what's going on with that and how I can help the city, be on the team to help move those projects forward and increase what the city's getting through smart scale and all the other projects. One final question, appreciate your indulgence, bridges, do we have any bridges that are in poor repair?
Yes, the bridge that we have that is in poor condition is the Bedford Avenue Bridge.
It's on there, okay, thank you.
Every, all the rest of them are fair or better, and we've got about seventy-two bridges throughout the city, bridges and culprits.
Thank you.
I have a couple of, okay. Going back to the road diets, I, I've heard mention the possibility of Leesville Road switching over kind of to a road diet type program in there, it, I'm kind of throwing this out as general discussion, because this is a new concept for me, so, is that something that is worth exploring, what would be the process of exploring that, just with so much development going over there, obviously, that's creating more traffic, but we're needing ways to manage that traffic?
So, the way I'm going to answer that is this, okay?
Yeah.
Yes, that's something that could be looked at, I don't know how well it would fare because of the amount of traffic on Leesville, when you narrow the lanes, when you remove lanes, you're removing capacity.
Yeah.
So, with the amount of traffic that's on Leesville Road with the four lanes, if you take it down to two, the level of service, which is how the traffic flows through there, would be reduced, and like I said, it's something you'd have to study and look at.
Right.
We'd probably bring on a transportation firm to look at that.
Okay.
But I, I don't know that it would score very well because of that.
Okay, and, and I understand a lot of new things are coming online, so I'm, I'm trying to think of what's the safety component with that as far as navigating the speeding scenario through there, but also managing that traffic flow, so that's helpful, what are other explorations in that area that could be resourceful?
To help reduce.
Just as far as Leesville with the new developments and, and some.
And I know that V dot did a STAR study, which is strategically, I don't know, I don't know what STAR stands for, but strategically, something.
Yep.
Roadway system, so whatever A is, I'm not quite sure in there.
Strategically awesome.
And they did one along Leesville Road, looking at pedestrian and bicycle improvements.
Okay.
And to reduce some of the, the access points.
Right.
Narrow down the number of driveways that are through there or, or roadway entrances, and that had a, that had a good amount of ideas that you could do.
Yeah.
But like I said, it was also looked at sidewalks on one side, and that was a very expensive.
Right.
Scenario.
Yeah.
They, and they studied it from Timberlake all the way out to Sunburst Road in Campbell County, it was a multi-jurisdictional, jurisdictional study.
Okay, that is helpful. I, I just know with all, even developments that are coming up in the work session today, there's a lot of discussion about that area and that corridor, I'd love to get a copy of that study or just be directed to where I could find that, to have a better understanding there, that would be really resourceful.
Should be on the V dot website, I don't know that we have transferred it over to ours yet, I know Rachel was, we were talking about it one time, so.
All right, I'll take a look at that, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great, y'all are, thank you. And then, this may actually be answered here then, because I was looking at the state of good repair bridges, and I understand that you can't utilize it to add capacity, but could it, if you want to add capacity, could it be used for the base repair aspect of the project, then additional funding is added to that, because I'm looking at Bedford Avenue.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to confirm how those funds could converge together as far as being leveraged.
Yes, and we are, we are doing that on Bedford Avenue Bridge, correct.
Okay, that's awesome.
We're adding sidewalks on, it's got a sidewalk on one side, we're adding sidewalks on the other side, we're widening it slightly, we're, we're doing a little bit more to it than just replacing it as is over the roadway.
That's great, I'm one of those mamas with the stroller that goes over that bridge, so I'm excited about the, the dual-sided sidewalks.
You're a brave woman.
So.
I will say, though, that when that bridge is replaced, it will be completely shut down and removed.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure people.
We'll move to the carrier and we'll do the trek, is what we'll have to, what we'll have to do for a bit, no, that's, that's really appreciated, those are all the questions that I have right now, thank you so much, Dr. Robbins.
As far as the Hansmill Bridge, how long ago was that done?
That was worked on, I'm going to say it was two thousand, like, two or three.
Okay.
I believe, it was right after I got here, I think, when we, when we.
I feel so old, I remember, I thought it was, I thought it was redone already, so, that's really showing my age, but anyway, but thank you all, it's all the knowledge, with all the funding streams that we have between state, local, funding and sharing and all that, that's just amazing, I'm always impressed by our city team, of police, our fire department, and how you're able to pull the different streams of resources to benefit the city, it just takes institutional knowledge that you have, so we appreciate that history, where you know how to get these resources from here and these resources from there, and how you make it work better for our citizens, so, I was just, again, hearing all this, it's just, I'm just so amazed, and I appreciate your institutional knowledge and bringing it to the city, and how it can benefit our taxpayers and lessen that burden for us in repairing, because these things are so costly, so again, I really appreciate your work here, thank you so much.
Awesome, well then, let's, we don't have any general business today, so we'll just move to roll call, Dr. Wilder?
I just, I sent you, I'm kidding, something just now, a person was asking me about Real Mountain Avenue, about like trailers being parked on the road, I just, the whole text, I realized she was telling about her mother as well, so just ignore that piece, but it's just a piece about, what's that policy, if you just let me know, you know, if you get an opportunity, I appreciate that, that's it, thank you.
All right, first, I just want to thank everyone for holding down, the mayor for holding down the fort last month, greatly appreciate it, I got to visit my husband as he came out of P O W training, and so that was a real privilege to be able to do, so thank you all for your indulgence there. And then, Danae, I already mentioned this, but thank you so much, Oak Lane, getting that cleaned up, I have some very, very happy constituents that appreciate your diligence there, so, thank you, and I am looking forward to our next P D C meeting, where we will be going over sidewalks, which was a request quite a while ago, but we've had to push it back a number of times, and that's on me.
and that's on me. Very excited for that. And I don't know if you all have agenda items that you want to include on the agenda for PDC moving forward, but please let me know, because I definitely want to incorporate all of that. So thank you all. Mr. D.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you, Gaynell, for the tour during Citizens Academy. That was wonderful. I enjoyed myself thoroughly. Learned a lot about so many things that y'all do in public works and I am thankful for the work you do. Look forward to meeting with you on that one project on Leesville Road that we spoke about, so to learn a little bit. Part of this is to catch me up, that learning curve. And I'm trying to, to quickly drink from the fire hose as quick as I can to learn what's going on and to help the folks. Leesville Road seems to be quite the center of attention these days and we do have a lot of things that are going in out there. We're not exactly sure how it's all gonna look once it all gets in place. We'll figure it out and decide if we need to do something different out there. I'm not a huge fan of dieting, just learned that term, unless dieting includes maybe speed limit reductions. Does that, is that called dieting? Because you're going slower. But usually if you diet, you're skinnier and you go faster. So I don't know if that's even considered dieting, but there is a lot of racing that goes on on Leesville Road. I hear it, I see it and I'm surprised somebody hasn't, hasn't died yet, but it's that long straightaway and people are using it like it's the old lawyer's road, if you remember that, you know, back in the day. So it is a long straightaway and, and people are having fun out there, but somebody's gonna get really hurt because you got residential's right up against the road. So I see kids playing out there all the time, 15 feet from the road and, and here comes some guy here 90 miles an hour or plus coming through there. So I've asked the chief to, to put some extra patrols out there, speed patrols, and he's done it. So I would like to thank him if he's watching. I think that does have a serious effect on people's driving habits. I know it does on mine. But to, maybe we could get those folks to follow the 45 and the 35s that are through there, that'd be awesome. But thank you again for everything you guys do. Appreciate it.
Thanks, staff, for all you do.
Thank you. Y'all work hard for us. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, our next regularly scheduled meeting is June 10th at 3:00. Meeting adjourned.[1732.99]